And that's the microphone, okay? So, and I think, and I think you can just stand up to it. You don't need to like, I, I, never tap one, remember? It's testing.
Hello, my name is Echo Corlin and I'm representing Ida Baker High School's Drama Department. And today we will be performing a few pieces from our upcoming musical, Bring It On The Musical, on April 28th, uh, 29th and 30th. Hope you enjoy.
I'm sad now it's here, so it'll shock you to hear That I was a total dork my freshman year.
You.
Right? I was a loser, a mess, a loner, depressed. And every day I had to be me. I walked around hoping no one would see me. I locked myself in the guys' room and let the tears fall. Till then Davis Custodian knocked on my door. And asked if I'd heard of the band The Grateful Dead. And I thought he might not be quite right in the head. But he changed my life around when he said, "Right now everything seems so important, But time rushes by at a clip. And when you look back these high school years will be nothing more than a blip. So, you might as well enjoy the trip."
God, it's such a long blip.
That's what he said, and I said, "Trust me on this when you're older and wiser and fatter and better. And you look back on this moment in time, the only thing that's gonna matter. And did you only do what you thought you should do? Did you dance monkey dance 'cause the man told you to? Or did you spend your time doing what brings joy to you? All you see is this old dude with a broom in his hand. But I followed my dreams and my favorite band. So don't sit on your butt waiting for life to begin. If you do what you love with your time, then you will win. What a long, strange, wonderful trip it's been. Right now everything seems so important, But time rushes by at a clip. And when you look back these high school years will be nothing more than a blip. Just a tale to tell that rings about. So what the heck? We might as well enjoy the trip."
You know, it wouldn't take much for you guys to be an amazing squad. You know, you guys would be a great squad.
We ain't no cheerleaders. We don't do favors but no good barbecue. Don't get it twisted, this isn't your sorority. Sisters singing switchin', rah rah, sis boom bah. Rah rah la bla bla. Sing it with your family. We don't get down with no pom poms. We bust off with every new routine. When we broke through with our crew, no one could do what we do. It's true, we would still do it if no one was watching. And that's real, who can blame them for watching? When the DJ plays our song and it all goes down as planned. You're in the pocket, we're poppin' and lockin'. You probably go shopping with your daddy's credit card in your hand. Call us arrogant, 'cause it works for what we have. It's just as fate as it may, as it may, I can take it. Okay, baby, if that don't keep sleeping at night. So, Miss Richard, are you part of the...
Oh, my lands, no, they never let me on the squad.
There. You can call your therapist and complain, no girl ain't right. 'Cause every day we get haters who say they can take us. Okay, baby, if that don't keep sleeping at night. So we're dead right from the ground, we don't know. Or you never get the chance. Do you have a ton if you wanna rendezvous? Your momma's, we don't wanna cry. Rah rah la bla bla. Now, wouldn't you like to do this? Rah rah la bla bla. And wouldn't you like to do that? Rah rah la bla bla. I did it with a stick, girl. Rah rah, sis boom, ha!
Dear God up in heaven, a prayer for Campbell. Once she was my hero, now she's a disgrace. I'm here on top and she's less than zero, dragging me down to save face. She always worked hard, she was trusting and fair. And Lord, that's the crux of her problem right there. You need that killer instinct to give you the nerve To grab everything you want in life but may not deserve. Like, if some girl's in your way, there's only one thing to do. You blackmail your mother who sits on the school board To get Campbell transferred and ripped from the life that she knew. And your dreams come true.
Your dreams come true.
And your dreams come true.
Your dreams come true.
And your dreams come true.
Your dreams come true.
And your dreams come true. Oh, oh, it takes that killer instinct, that killer desire.
Killer desire.
Are you the little ant, or do you set the ants on fire? And if there's two girls in line to lead the team before you, Then you hack the school system and change Kyler's grade from a D to an F. Then you hire some shake dialing Kyler's toothbrush So she can track spot on, no one is left to be captain. So they turn to you.
They turn to you.
And your dreams come true.
Dreams come true, they do, dah dah.
Life's sound awful, what have I become? Who's that girl in the mirror I see?
Bushy, bushy, bushy.
Some backstabbing whack job I'd run screaming from. Oh God, I just love being me. Would it all of you kill to be me? You need that killer instinct since time first began. From Yang is caught to Bristol Palin. You need a killer plan, you need to reach the top If it's the last thing you do. I'm thrilled to be the high school grad seniors 'cause my end of chance 15.
Into the world, they'll know my name.
I ain't prison-hacking, I'm a felon in a four-foot frame. I just use my killer instinct and my dreams come true. Oh yeah!
Blue to the who.
Listen up, my subjects, your attention please. Listen up, this is how it's gonna go. In a brother of everything growing old, we'll get better calls 'til the end. But I'll go to show these girls how to put on a show. We need the very best boys we can find. It's gonna be hard and it's gonna take time. Do what you gotta do, wine and dine, but keep this in mind. Imagine the lights, imagine the people, imagine us in the middle of the crowd. Imagine the fame, imagine the fortune.
It's all happening.
Imagine life and all the changes. Imagine making this neighborhood proud. Screaming our names out loud.
It's all happening.
Listen up, this is how it's gonna be. We'll qualify, finals and shine on TV. And we are gonna need a new routine. We need some new dudes on our new team. We need the very best boys we can find. It's gonna be hard and it's gonna take time.
But if we stay on our grind.
The world is gonna watch us shine.
You're crazy.
Look where you're asking. Cheerleading, you say? Okay, so women who wouldn't give me the time of day, I signed the squad and they want me to play. And if I play, I'll be famous? Give me a hard one, these are no brainers. I don't know what these other brothers are thinking, like really? What are y'all thinking? Let it sink in, what are you scared? Consider it, it's a little different, isn't it? Y'all thinking the same, and then give it a minute envisioning That in the middle of 70 women on television, every little bit of precision. Imagine.
Imagine girls, imagine action.
The only boy in the middle of the crew. Locker room stops the practices.
It's all happening.
World's, world's reaction when they see what Jackson can do.
Fellas, how you feeling my point of view?
It's all happening.
Let's go, whoa.
No.
Let's go, whoa.
Don't say no, whoa. Whoa, whoa.
Oh yes, me and Lassie and I got it.
Step no less.
Me and Lassie and I got it.
With no stress.
Well, there's an event I got speaking less. You tell them any, yes, I'm gonna get much more. Paparazzi always coming by.
Our door.
And it doesn't matter what we're famous for. Everything we get is gonna be top drawer.
And our aim is.
And the yard was a cheerleader.
To be famous.
All that I do was a cheerleader.
Soon the world will know what I'm famous.
Girl, you'll be a cheerleader.
Yes, our aim is.
Yo, Madonna was a cheerleader.
To be famous.
Yo, I wanna be a cheerleader.
Soon the world will know our name.
Michael Jordan was a cheerleader.
Stop lying.
Michael Jordan was a member of the Lady High School Cheerleading Squad for two years. Or joined the junior varsity basketball team. I found this on Wikipedia, so it has to be true.
Picture me webbing the two-three like Jordan Wall When he jumped from the free throw line, a legend in his own time. But I'm just a legend in my own mind. Gimme the ball, I fall back, I got this. Driving the lane, I'm insane with the hotness. Yes, I rip it, I rip it, I take it, I flip it. And around double dribbling without scotting. And now for something different, I found this competition. And now y'all wanna go buck wild on television. But I admit it, it's not hot, I'm visioning, but I stick in it. Y'all sneaking in the hot pot, been locked till we bop to the top.
Ladies.
Bring it on if you love hip-hop.
And me.
I grab it when you flipping stuff. And tell Jordan that I'm coming for a spot.
And imagine the life, imagine the people. Imagine that, imagine that, imagine the crowd. Imagine the fortune. Yeah. It's all happening.
And all the changes. Imagine making this neighborhood proud.
Go Jackson, go Jackson. It's all happening.
And the truth is, we can do this If we start right now and pursue this. We'll get through this. And we know this.
It's all happening.
So let's go, put the whole world on notice. Who's in?
I'm in.
I'm in, I'm in, I'm in, I'm in.
I'm in, I'm in, I'm in.
We can leave behind the world, you know. Let's go, whoa. Let's go, whoa. Let's go, whoa. We gotta go.
Get your hands up, whoa.
We gotta go.
Get your hands up, whoa.
We gotta go.
Get your hands up, whoa.
We gotta go, let's go, let's go, let's go.
It's all happening.
Good evening ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. School Board Meeting of April nineteenth, two thousand sixteen is now called to order. The time is six oh two PM. This time, we request that all electronic devices be turned off or put into the silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography, except during the special presentation portion of the meeting. We'd like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission to be ensure that each student achieves his or her highest potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Prior to the start of this evening's boards, board meeting, we have been enjoying the musical theater group from Ida Baker High School. Performing selections from Bring It On, the Musical. This musical has been the most challenging to date, however, the students have really risen, as you've seen, to the challenge. They have done their choreography, stunting, management of the pit, built the sets and designed the publicity under the direction of Lauren Locata and their wonderful volunteer musical director, Laura May Ball. They are extremely dedicated and talented group of students and they have planned and ran District Six Thesbian Competition for the first time this year. They helped out and worked on the state competition and they participated in the Drug House Odyssey in addition to this musical. They are great leaders, dreamers and all-around a wonderful team. At this time, the musical theater will perform once more for us. Take it away.
Uh, any other high power that may be listening, it's me, Campbell. You probably already know that. Well, today's last day of school and then it's summer, but after that, it's cheer trials to replace those old seniors who are gonna leave our plane of existence. And then, that's what be held by our captain who gets elected at lunch. So I'm talking to you. You know, I know you have more pressing matters than who gets captain. I watch the news, but I can, I can use any extra luck you could throw my way. Cause I worked my whole life to lead you to the Hive Nationals. So I've ever wanted since I was a kid. I was in the stands rooting for our team when I saw the Buckner New Cheer for the first time. Standing on their hands, every move extreme. I looked around, those people see what I see. These true men girls are superhuman girls. When they started to fly, I knew that I would find a way to be up there one day. Cause in that moment, I finally knew what I was born to.
Go, go, go Campbell, go Campbell, go Campbell, go, go, go Campbell, go!
Made a bow-up, gonna be a cheerleader like Buckner's Brown. And when I saw someone tally-tumble that eighteen, my life's every adult's favorite dream. Slow motion now, low call. Hey! Kids all stop and stare. I feel like I'm a part of it all for the first time. And if I ever go. I know my spot is there. Cause I've got the Buckner New Cheers here behind me.
These true men girls are superhuman girls. And there is nothing that they can't do, nothing that they can't be of all the squads. They're semi-dammy guts. And our powers and might we do what we were born to do.
Ready? Okay. My name is Skylar. I rep the Buckner's Pride. I'm probably too cool for you, so friend, your request denied.
I'm Tyler, from Tyler, my real name is Denise. But Skylar said to change it and I knew what Skylar said.
My name is Bridgette. I rock the parrot head. It's hot in here and kinda smelled like someone wet the bed.
Bruh, what's up, my name is Steven, I'm so handsome it hurts. Don't need in a Vorella, I stand under many skirts.
What?
Yeah, I'm a boss, I don't care what the haters say.
How many dudes can say they pick up girls all day?
Love you.
Love you more.
Alright, the ballots are in. To celebrate the beginning of summer, I choose myself to win the results. Campbell? You look a little... Just tell us already, someone's whole lifetime of dreams. He gets shouted in a few short... Go! Tell us. So our new captain is? Stop it! Free. It's Campbell! Thank you, thank you all.
Baby, congratulations.
I promise Truman's going to Nationals this year. Thank you.
That was cute. That was cute, cute.
That was cute. They had the best time.
Let's give one more round of applause to the Ida Baker Thesbian Group. This time, we're gonna take a brief pause so we can allow people that just came for this to, to exit. I would also ask at this time, if you're planning on speaking at the, uh, for the public comment, I would ask that you go take a card and fill out a card and give it to Mr. Martin, please, so that we have an account of the people that wish to speak. Thank you. At this point, this meeting is recess. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We are now ready to resume the April nineteenth, two thousand sixteen School Board Meeting. With us today this evening's student representative is North Fort Myers High School Senior Ben Burkey. Ben is a member of the S, uh, Student Government Association. He was club president of his 4-H. And he actually is, uh, has over three thousand service hours in the, in his community up to date. And he was elected as our state parliamentarian for the 4-H Club. Only eight students in the state of Florida, uh, reached this, this, uh, prestigious position and they represent over two hundred and thirty thousand students. Ben will be attending Abraham Baldwin Agricultural College, uh, in Tipton, Georgia, majoring in diversified agriculture and mining and political science. His career aspiration is to become a lobbyist. Welcome, Ben. This, this evening's agenda includes the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance, three recognitions, public comment, consent action item, which includes two items under resolution, three items under executive services, four items under business and finance, four items under operations, seven items under teaching and learning, six items under superintendent recommendations, one which is good cause. Dr. Atkins, would you please provide the basis for good cause?
Basis for good cause is that we have four principal appointments. We are asking the board to, uh, recommend these appointments to put these principals in place prior to recruitment fair so that they have an opportunity to recruit staff for their schools.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. As Presiding Officer, I find that there is good cause to add this item on the agenda. We have one item under public hearing and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Fisher, seconded by Ms. Dozier, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. At this time, Ms. Dozier will deliver the invocation, after which Ms. La Riviera will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Dozier?
Please stand. Now your hands. Dear God, we thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for all of the families that are represented here this evening. We appreciate the opportunity to gather here this evening for this school board meeting. Please guide each of us, the parents, the students, members of the public, board members and the superintendent as we speak this evening. Please let each of our presentations and all of our comments be respectful of others and ensure that our suggestions will benefit our students and our entire community as a whole. We ask that you guide the superintendent as he brings forth his recommendations. Please guide us as a board and give us the wisdom to make the best and right decisions concerning each of the recommendations that are brought to the table this evening. We pray that this meeting will be successful, productive and blessed. For this, we give you the glory for all we will accomplish during this meeting. Amen.
The cadet presenting the national colors tonight will be introduced by Colonel Rodney Scott. Excuse me, Colonel Rodney Scott Robinson from Fort Myers Senior High School's J-R-O-T-C program. Colonel Robinson retired from the Army in March two thousand ten after twenty-nine years of service. He has been a Lee County J-R-O-T-C instructor since July two thousand twelve.
The national colors for our Pledge of Allegiance tonight will be presented by Cadet Major Adara Vinyl from Fort Myers Senior High School Junior R-O-T-C Program. Cadet Vinyl is a senior at Fort Myers, a cadet company commander and the commander of the Greenway Battalion Color Guard. She has committed several hundreds of hours presenting the state and national colors at Fort Myers Community Events over the last four years. She maintains a three-point-five GPA in the Fort Myers High School International Baccalaureate Program. She's a fervent Girl Scouter and has served the community for many years in this capacity with her mom. Next year, Cadet Vinyl will study, or excuse me, major in business at Mary Baldwin College in Stanton, Virginia. Please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated.
I would like to invite the following individuals from Fort Myers High School to please join me here at the podium. Principal David La Rosa and student Joshua Kennedy. Also, from Lee High Senior High School, Principal Jackie Corey and student Jordan Warren. And from Dunbar High School, Principal Carl Burnside and student Christopher Lather, Jr. The Sunshine State Scholars Recognition Program for high school students began in nineteen ninety-seven to recognize excellence in mathematics and science. It has since evolved into a program designed to recognize Florida's top high school science, technology, engineering and math, our STEM, students and recruit them to pursue their post-secondary education in the state of Florida. Throughout September and October of each year, every school selects their top team of STEM eleventh grade students based on established criteria. Recently, the Lee County School District was pleased to announce that Fort Myers High School student Joshua Kennedy and Lee High Senior High School student Jordan Warren are this year's Lee County Sunshine State Scholars. Christopher Lather, Jr. of Dunbar High School was named this year's alternate. The school board and the superintendent are very pleased to recognize Joshua and Jordan as this year's Lee County Sunshine State Scholars and acknowledge Christopher as this year's alternate. They are proud of their accomplishments and we are extremely proud of these students and wish them all the very best in their future endeavors. And at this time, I would like to give them their awards. Joshua? And Jordan? And Christopher? And would one of you like to say something? Carl, you wanna say something? Jackie, you wanna say something? One of you wanna say something?
Well, good evening. I, I want to thank the board and superintendent on behalf of all the high schools in Lee County to acknowledge these students in the area of STEM, science, technology, engineering and math. And, uh, it is, besides being a very important part at Dunbar High School, it's also very important throughout our entire district. And those students who excel in this really need to be recognized and I'm very proud to be part of that and proud of our school board for recognizing these very deserving students. Thank you.
Good evening. high school thesbians from across the state. By showcasing student talent, these festivals provide an opportunity to exchange ideas and learning from others. The Lee County School District was well represented at this year's festivals with a large number of students being selected for various awards. This evening, we would like to introduce those students, their principals and their teachers. As I call your name, please come forward and line up in front of the board table to have your picture taken with board members and the superintendent. We'll take an individual picture of each group's honorees. Excuse me. So we'll begin with Cypress Lake High School. Principal Angela Rolls, teachers Alex Gleman and Patty Gare. If you would come forward and read the names of your students so that they could come up and be photographed.
Sarah received a superior for her monologue performance. Our next student is Callie Atkinson. Callie received a superior for duet musical performance. And our last student is Liam Fisher.[741.82][741.82](APPLAUSE). Our students who could not be here, Tova Neworth, Melody Cameron, Martina Mauser, Jacob Garcia, Gillian Marino, Courtney Camerillo and Cameron Rogers.[760.32][760.32](APPLAUSE).
And now from Ida Baker High School, Principal Jamie Covert and teacher Laura Licata.
The following students received a superior rating at the Florida State Thesbiens. Echo Corlin, straight superior solo musical. Samantha Licata, superior for solo musical. Evan Hornbuckle, superior for pantomime. Austin Maldonado, superior for pantomime. Lauren Fornaisen, superior for pantomime. Emily Licata, superior for pantomime. Ariana Ashmore, superior for pantomime. Haley Tucker, superior for monologues. Jade Kimbra, superior for set design and best of room for that day. And Alyssa Ware and Kira could not be here this evening. And Lexi Emery, superior for pantomime. She's on here. I did not forget, I saved the best for last. So, thank you.
Lox.
Hi, receiving superior ratings this year at our district competition. We had student Alina Stevenson for superior in duet acting. Katie Harvey, superior in solo musical. And Nicole Marabely, superior in solo musical. And not with us tonight is Guadalupe Mendoza who also received a superior in duet acting.[984.73][984.73](APPLAUSE).
Okay, and from Mariner High School, Principal Dr. Robert Butts and teacher Patricia Stout. And the student is Malina Amiglio.
Our student Alina Amiglio unfortunately is not able to be here this evening because of a prior family commitment, but Alina earned a superior rating at the district festival
And finally, from North Fort Myers High School, Principal Matt Mederos and teacher Michelle Whitner.
Yes, I'm going to try to expedite this list, please. So anyway, again, thank you for having us here and we were proud to represent our district with one act and we were also critics' choice. Critics' Choice was an interesting piece but very appropriate called Come Look at the Freaks. So, I will then, I will then introduce the people that were in that. I will try to get this, okay, so the following people, please come forward. And again, if you could, I know this is a strange, could you hold your applause because after I say certain names, I'm also going to mention something else maybe wonderful they did, or if I don't mention something else, there wasn't anything else wonderful they did, okay? So, these were, I think I'll just go with the freaks first. Come on down, Zachary Rivers, who was also a straight superior solo musical freak. Let's see, Liz Mora, Hannah Steele, Kelly Tackett, Morgan Egan, Rachel Salerno, Tasia Becker, Christine Almodovadar, Matthew Aparte, Brian Sosa, A.J. Gross, Mark King, Sam Marquito, Carling Witt, and Jess, no, Jesse, okay. The people that I did not mention, Jesse DeRosier, superior playwriting. As I mentioned, Zachary Rivers, superior solo musical. Going back up quickly, Jessica Hill, superior costume construction. I'm really trying hard, yes, who? Oh, David Lucy Mabel, yes, Come Look at the Freaks with David Lucy Mabel. Duet acting, superior, Jordan Masario and Joel Rosen Garden. Anybody else? Yes, please, yes, and like I said, our one act was selected along with another one act to represent District Six and that was Tatum O'Donnell and Anthony Marquito. Hannah Repert, I knew Hannah, sorry, good. I mean, I'm, this is Hannah Repert and, and Sam Marquito's still up there. He also was in the one act and it was a great year and we're always proud to represent Lee County. Thank you.[1274.48][1274.48](APPLAUSE). Yes, and my principal, my principal said, tell them about the musical. We, this weekend, will be performing Legally Blonde, the musical, at North Fort Myers High School, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday matinee.
I would like to invite the following individuals, please join me at the lectern. Ms. Peggy Schlichter, Administrator for Parent Communication in the Communications Department.[1351.01][1351.01](APPLAUSE). The intent of the school improvement and accountability legislation is to improve Florida's schools by returning the responsibility for education to those closest to the students, the schools, teachers and parents. Recognizing that the involvement of the community is vital to student success, the Commissioner of Education and the Commissioners Community Involvement Council established the Five-Star School Award, the highest award for community involvement. To qualify for this award, a school must achieve 100% of the required criteria and provide a portfolio that documents the achievement of criterion in the following areas: business partnership, family involvement, volunteers, student community service and the school advisory council. This evening, we are pleased to recognize and extend congratulations to 18 schools that met the strenuous requirements to receive the Five-Star School Award for the 2014-2015 school year. As I announce the names of the schools, I would like the representatives from each to come forward for a group picture with the board members and the superintendent. Bay Shore Elementary. Bonita Springs Middle Center for the Arts. Cape Elementary. Cypress Lake High. Harns Marsh Elementary. Ida S. Baker High. J. Colan English Elementary. North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts. Orangewood Elementary. San Carlos Park Elementary. Spring Creek Elementary. Tanglewood Elementary. Three Oaks Elementary. Three Oaks Middle.
This time, we'll take another brief recess to let the thesbians and all our award winners exit the building.
The rules concerning public comment are posted at the back of the room. The school board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the conclusion of public comment time, the school board chair may address concerns raised by speakers or may assign responsibility to the superintendent to do so. Speakers are expected to act in a respectful manner. Those who fail to do so after being warned by the meeting chair may be required to leave the meeting. Disruptive attacks on individuals are prohibited. Just a reminder, the school board policy prohibits booing, hissing, clapping, shouting, cursing, or disrespectful comments in response to comments made by school board members, school district staff, or members of the public providing comment. Mr. Toyber.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anybody who did not get the opportunity to fill out a blue card but would like to address the Board? If you are in the right-hand section, please raise your hand. I have one. Your name, please.
Joel Valerio.
On the left-hand section. In the back?
Yeah.
Mr. Eagle? And Ms. Ottenberger. Anybody else? Mr. Martin, please call your first card.
Yes, sir. We have 24 speakers this evening, so the time allowed per speaker will be reduced to two minutes each. The first card is from Mr. Castellano, Mark Castellano.
I'm going to have to read very quickly, so hang with me. Good evening, Dr. Atkins, board members, and Mr. Martin. My name is Mark Castellano, President of the Teachers Association of Lee County. Tonight, I would like to take a moment to talk about the upcoming negotiations we will engage in with the district for the 2016-2017 school year. While Dr. Atkins has talked about working conditions being the top issue in our recent agreement between the Teachers Association and the school district, which is accurate, there is a major concern as we prepare for our negotiations for 1617 that was at best modestly addressed in the contract: salaries. While we escaped pay cuts and forced furlough days as other districts had during the Great Recession, our teachers, like so many others in our society, saw only bonuses and little to no increases in their salaries. This was compounded by the convoluted system of performance pay that has been dictated to local school districts by our legislature and governor. While we cannot circumvent all of the inequities of this flawed system, we have the ability to make it as palatable as possible by having our school board show they truly do value teachers. Despite what some board members may have said, we are well experienced in how bargaining authority is granted by the Board to the superintendent and the district's chief negotiator. It is that bargaining authority that I am asking this board to consider when you enter into an executive session prior to our negotiations. The most significant concern expressed to us about the recent agreement is salaries. While we appreciate them, we need more than compliments, kudos, kind words, and celebrations of great teachers. We need this board to step up and grant a bargaining authority that will allow us to show teachers they are truly valued at all points of their career. We need this board to show teachers that they will be paid with more than lip service, that this board is willing to allow Dr. Atkins and the district bargaining team to provide a real and substantial increase to salaries. While we understand the failures of our legislature to provide adequate funding necessary to do all that we need to do, we also know that this board has options to allow for money for teacher raises to be laid on the table. I cannot urge you strongly enough. Thank you.
In order to expedite this portion of the meeting, I'm going to call cars in groups of five. So when I call your name the first time, please come to one of the two lecterns. When I call your name the second time, you may begin your comments. Cars two through five are Mayor Peter Simmons, Thomas Pepitone, Donna Stone, and Beverly Greenstein. Please come to a podium. Mayor Simmons.
Good evening, everyone. My son, Petey, is with me this evening. He's a seventh grader at Bonita Springs Charter School. My name's Peter Simmons, and I'm the mayor of Bonita Springs in the community that, before you this evening, is discussing a new high school. As you know, the city and our students have been in need of a high school for a number of years. We are indeed excited that the time has finally come to make a decision and for a high school to come to fruition. However, we also know that not everybody is in full agreement of the current location or the suggested location for the school. But I also know that the school board has done their due diligence, they've done their work, this has been a long process, and I know not one site is ever perfect. But I do believe the school board has done an excellent job above and beyond exemplary in communicating with the community and the due diligence in evaluating all of the sites, with the Imperial Site being the best fit overall. To those in our community who would not agree with this site, I can only pledge to you, as the mayor of Bonita Springs, like any other development that would be proposed near a neighborhood, the city of Bonita Springs will continue to work with the school board to mitigate those concerns, especially as related to traffic, sound, and light, and any other concerns that citizens may have. With this in mind, I am here to congratulate and thank the board members for a job well done. I heartily recommend approval of this proposal before you to purchase a site on Imperial for the new high school of Bonita Springs. I appreciate the efforts of the school board members, as well as your staff, to bring the project to this point. We look forward to working with you in the coming months as this exciting project gets underway. Thank you very much.
Thomas Pepitone.
Good evening. I'm Tom Pepitone. I'm a local business owner and father to three grown men. I have resided here for 20 years now. The priority my wife and I had in making our decision to move our family to this wonderful area was looking into the quality and access to good education in schools, with the high school being on the top of that list. I could elaborate why a high school is good for a community and the increase in popular values, et cetera, but believe that this is not necessary in this forum. You will be doing the people of Bonita Springs, especially young families and their children, a disservice by not voting tonight in favor of building a high school in Bonita Springs before this precious opportunity slips away for even, for everyone in Bonita Springs. This site has proven to be a good choice. I believe that most of the adjacent communities are not 55 and older, age-restricted, and they now have families living in their communities as their neighbors, so I do not understand why building a high school should be much of a concern to some owners now living there. Enough time, energy, and monies have been spent in choosing a location. I hope you find in your hearts to do what's best for the majority of people living in Bonita Springs and vote tonight to allow a high school in the community. Thank you.
Donna Stone.
Good evening. My name is Donna Stone. I'm from Worthington Country Club, External Affairs Committee in Bonita Springs. We want to thank the school board for coming to the proper decision per the Bonita comp plan on the new high school to be located at the Imperial Parkway location. We want the opponents of the Bonita High School on Imperial to think about some important issues as if it was your child going to the new school, not at the Imperial location. Would you want your child to walk or bike across four highway ramps of bumper-to-bumper traffic and multiple accident-prone lanes? To dodge many cars making illegal turns off the ramps? To deal with the thousands of cars going to the flea market every week? Or to the future renovation of the Bonita Beach Road renovation? Or would you rather have your students walk or bike to a safe location on the Bonita Parkway, on the Imperial Parkway, excuse me? To deal with over 10,000 cars daily once Logan Boulevard connects to Bonita Beach Road? To try and get to Small Plaza for jobs or to safely get to a large variety of jobs on Old 41? Would you want your child to dodge over 1,000 dump trucks traveling weekly from the mine on Bonita Grand going to Bonita Beach Road and Route 75, excuse me? Do the students want their high school to be responsible for continuous runoff polluting our only drinking water aquifer, the Imperial River, the Keel Canal, and eventually to our beaches? Do you want your child to wade through floodwaters on Bonita Grand when the Imperial River floods over every five years or so? Or do you want your students to cost the taxpayers additional $7 million and longer construction time because of all the environmental issues on the Bonita Beach Road location? Your students should be able to walk to the high school and after-school events rather than be stuck on long bus rides to a stairwell. If Hawthorne or other people insist on bringing a lawyer on a frivolous lawsuit...
Your time's up, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Speakers six through 10 are Ben Nelson, George Fox, Andrew Evans, Charla Fox, and Carl Schweng. Beverly Greenstein.
Good evening. Beverly Greenstein, Worthington Country Club, Bonita Springs. The students of Bonita Springs need and deserve their own high school. They deserve a school that can be the center of their academic, social, and sports world. They need a school that allows for their safe arrival and departure, whether walking, biking, or by car or bus, and I thank you for all your hard work in this effort. The Imperial Site is surrounded by communities of students, and the students can enjoy preschool and after-school activities without the dangers of crossing interstates and maneuvering around the trucks and cars that go through to the mines. The Imperial Site is build-ready, does not require tons of soil to fill in acres of land, keeping the costs more manageable and allowing the students to have their school in a more realistic timeline. Using the Imperial Site protects the free flow of water in the DRGR, preserving our aquifers, and minimizing pollution. Please keep the students and our water supply safe. The Imperial Site is the site that makes sense. Thank you for all your hard work to this point.
Ben Nelson.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say I'm proud to tell you that I am a citizen and resident of Bonita Springs here tonight. I'm very glad about that. I would like to tell you that coming here tonight and watching these high school kids perform like this, this is what the city of Bonita Springs has missed out for, for probably 55 to 60 years. 55 to 60 years. All throughout my life in Bonita Springs, we have been missing that. Our elementary schools, our Bonita Middle School, grade schools, we've got, seen great programs from them, but when it came to the high school level, we've missed out. It's time to fix that. And you have worked so hard on that, and I've been so proud of your commitment towards putting a high school in Bonita Springs. Now is that moment in time when you can make that happen. I'm so proud to be here tonight because we're right on the cusp of doing that. I want to thank your staff, Reggie Snail, and everybody there that worked for your staff. They worked so hard, and you've all had to put up with a lot of grief to get to this point. But this is the right site, this is the right time, this is the right place. I know you're going to do what's right. Thank you so much again, from a depth of my heart, from my family. Thank you.
George Fox.
Thank you. Board, I'd like to know how we're paying for this school? All right? Putting on a credit card is not good work by this board, not at all. Mr. Toyber, Mrs. Dozier, you two have been on this board 16 years and have accumulated $500 million in debt, 650 with the interest counted. This can't go on anymore. Mary Fisher and Pam, thank you for speaking up in favor of the half-cent sales tax. It is the only option this district has, period. And without it, this district will sink. So I hope the three of you who aren't voting for it have this on your conscience because you need to move fast. Without it, this high school is going to sink, this district. And Superintendent Atkins, I appreciate you saying that we have a good credit rating, but when you have that many old school buses and you're deferring maintenance on your buildings, I don't consider that a good credit rating. I don't care what Moody says. Let's get that clear. This district, this debt, this district is a clear and present danger, and if this board does not act, this district will be in serious trouble. Bonita School is a great school, and I support the Imperial Site, for sure. There's no doubt about that. But how we pay for it is just as important, more important than anything else this board has to address. Mary, please bring your motion tonight, Pam second it, and have a discussion. This needs to be out there in the public. I presented this at BUPAC the other day, and the entire room is now for the half-cent sales tax. Chris Quackenbush is for the half-cent sales tax. Okay? It will change. That's what she told me today. She told me that today. All right? Yeah, you did. Okay? This will change if you work. You have to work. You can't just sit here on high. You've got to get out there and work. You have to do this for your children, for the children, not for the politicians or anybody else. You've got to represent the children and get out there and work. You can't jeopardize their future.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Your time's up, sir. Andrew Evans.
My name is Andrew Evans. I am a Tanglewood Elementary parent, member of the school's SAC, and Tanglewood's representative to the District Advisory Council. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of fellow Tanglewood parents in support of Dr. Atkins' recognition of our principal, Sherri Whip, and his recommendation on the transfer of Ms. Whip to principal of Lehigh Elementary. With the Board's approval, Lehigh will receive in Ms. Whip an exemplary leader and a community builder. We at Tanglewood will be sad to see her transfer. Personally speaking, my daughters cried last summer when their assistant principal was appointed principal at another school. And I know they will cry this summer if Ms. Whip transfers. As a parent, my children's reaction impresses me. As a long-ago former elementary school student, I am amazed by their attachment to their school administrators. I would like to thank you for this time, and thank you to each and every one of you for your service, to our students in our district, and I ask the Board again to approve Dr. Atkins' recommended administrative transfers. Good evening.
Charla Fox.
Good evening, Board. Charla Fox, a member of this school district. I teach at South Fort Myers High. I am also a product of this school district. I wanted to talk with you, as a teacher, addressing the idea of teacher satisfaction. I know and I appreciate so much, Dr. Atkins, all the things that you are doing to focus on that, and I truly appreciate it, and I know that teachers across the county do. One of the things that I want to bring towards the Board is a reminder, though, where all these things, or many of them, are coming from. Many of them are coming from our legislature. Okay? They are coming from having changed from professional contracts to annual contracts. Okay? It has been a matter of we have been changed from being treated as professionals to being treated as commodities, as far as the legislature goes. And that is the way we feel because of what they have done. The VAM scores have increased that. We, as teachers, often feel that it has taken the impetus off of the student and put it on the teacher. So now the responsibility feels like it falls to the teacher themselves and just the teacher, instead of the student and the teacher in concert because of these things. The reason I bring this up is, in all the great things that Dr. Atkins is working on and doing, which I am very happy with, and ask that he continue to do, I'm asking that we make sure we do not lose sight of where these things have come from, and that we need to continue to work towards getting our legislators to understand and to make changes. We need to have them come in and sit, not in our classrooms... You've got to represent the children and get out there and work. You can't jeopardize their future.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Your time's up, sir. Andrew Evans.
My name is Andrew Evans. I am a Tanglewood Elementary parent, member of the school's SAC, and Tanglewood's representative to the District Advisory Council. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of fellow Tanglewood parents in support of Dr. Atkins' recognition of our principal, Sherri Whip, and his recommendation on the transfer of Ms. Whip to principal of Lehigh Elementary. With the board's approval, Lehigh will receive in Ms. Whip an exemplary leader and a community builder. We at Tanglewood will be sad to see her transfer. Personally speaking, my daughters cried last summer when their assistant principal was appointed principal at another school. And I know they will cry this summer if Ms. Whip transfers. As a parent, my children's reaction impresses me. As a long-ago former elementary school student, I am amazed by their attachment to their school administrators. I would like to thank you for this time, and thank you to each and every one of you for your service to our students in our district, and I ask the board again to approve Dr. Atkins' recommended administrative transfers. Good evening.
Charla Fox.
Good evening, Board. Charla Fox, a member of this school district. I teach at South Fort Myers High. I am also a product of this school district. I wanted to talk with you, as a teacher, addressing the idea of teacher satisfaction. I know and I appreciate so much, Dr. Atkins, all the things that you are doing to focus on that, and I truly appreciate it, and I know that teachers across the county do. One of the things that I want to bring towards the board is a reminder, though, where all these things, or many of them, are coming from. Many of them are coming from our legislature, okay? They are coming from having changed from professional contracts to annual contracts, okay? It has been a matter of we have been changed from being treated as professionals to being treated as commodities as far as the legislature goes, and that is the way we feel because of what they have done. The VAM scores have increased that. We, as teachers, often feel that it has taken the impetus off of the student and put it on the teacher. So now the responsibility feels like it falls to the teacher themselves and just the teacher, instead of the student and the teacher in concert because of these things. The reason I bring this up is, in all the great things that Dr. Atkins is working on and doing, which I am very happy with, and as that he continued to do, I'm asking that we make sure we do not lose sight of where these things have come from, and that we need to continue to work towards getting our legislators to understand and to make changes. We need to have them come in and sit, not in our classrooms for half an hour, but actually to work with us for a few days and see what the true life of a teacher is-
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Your time's up, ma'am.
...and the power that goes into it.
Speakers eleven through fifteen are Sarah DiDamar, Barbara Watkins, Jane Troop, Dan Troop, and Joan Yanni. Carl Schwing.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Board members, my name is Carl Schwing. I'm the city manager of the city of Benita Springs. I am a proud resident of Lee County for fourteen years. I'm also very proud to say that my daughter Kristen was a thespian and a graduate of the IB program from Fort Myers High, more years ago than I wish to. I'm here tonight to encourage you to support the proposal before you to purchase the Imperial Site for the new Benita Springs High School. As our former mayor and our current mayor have indicated, this is an important project for our city, for our residents, and I actually congratulate the board and all of your staff members, who in my opinion have been exemplary to work with. Reggie Snell, I worked with him when I was with the city of Cape Coral. It was great then. He's still the great guy, just so you know, he hasn't changed any. And we very much have enjoyed working with your entire staff on this. It takes courage, but I will tell you that you have shown that time and time again. This has been a thorough and a transparent process, second to none that I've seen in the public sector. And so I thank you for your efforts. I hope that you will support our new high school on the Imperial Site. Thank you very much.
Sarah DiDamar.
Hello, my name is Sarah DiDamar. I'm a resident of Benita, and I believe that we do need a high school in Benita Springs. I am here to express concerns for placing the high school on the Imperial Parkway. I implore the school board, as well as parents and faculty, to please open your eyes to our concerns. That being said, the comprehensive plan for Benita Springs deems by 2019, traffic on Imperial Parkway will be an F rating, and that is without a high school. The plan also states that this road should not be below an E rating. With new and inexperienced drivers, who are often distracted, this will put students as well as the public at great risk. Students living two miles from the Imperial Site will have an approximate forty-minute walk to and from school, and they do have to cross multiple lanes of traffic to do that. There are nineteen registered sexual offenders and predators within two miles of the Imperial Parkway Site. The Benita Grande Site has two, making this location far superior and safer. Safety is the number-one priority for our children. In addition to the Imperial Parkway Site, the Imperial Parkway Site is four miles from the Astero High School. A new high school should be more centrally located in Benita Springs to serve future growth, and that growth is coming, and it will be east of I-75. There are no more residential developments areas on Imperial Parkway. Thank you.
Barbara Watkins.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Watkins, and indeed, the students of Benita Springs deserve a safe high school. However, for over three years, particulates from 2,800 tons of asbestos-contaminated materials had time to sink into the groundwater and soil over seventy-seven acres of Imperial Parkway and possibly onto neighboring land where I live. However, only two acres of the land were tested for asbestos. Who knows how far this spread? In 2010, even after the asbestos cleanup, the landowner's representative labeled the property worthless and unsellable because it would always be stigmatized as a contaminated dump site. How can it now, when it was at that time deemed only worth $1.3 million, how is it now suddenly worth $12 million? The asbestos contamination at the Imperial Parkway Site presents severe potential health hazards that will be difficult to overcome. The lingering possibilities of underground and underwater contamination, which was not tested, cannot be risked when potential construction disturbs the land. How much risk is acceptable when it comes to the health of children? What margin of error are you willing to accept when it comes to the health of children? No amount of risk is worth asbestos-related diseases to construction workers, area residents, and future students, faculty, and staff. No matter how much the school board stresses that the site will be examined for asbestos, we have learned from Flint, Michigan, and other national environmental disasters that the EPA and government officials cannot be trusted with the health and safety of its citizens. Do not spend $71 million on a school that could be condemned in the future due to latent contamination. I respectfully submit, as a retired high school teacher of twenty years, that there are too many unanswered questions for you to risk purchasing a dump site for a new school. Thank you.
Jane Troop.
My name is Jane Troop. I'm a resident of Benita Springs. Seeing this student activity today just made me even more excited, as an ex-high school teacher, to see a high school in Benita Springs. However, I'm afraid the board's sites have been set on the wrong site. The Benita Grande Road provides the following positive assets for the new high school. All emergency service facilities are much closer to the Benita Grande Site than they are to the Imperial Site, and we know what a difference a second can make in a matter of life and death. Pristine adjacent preservation land provides an excellent opportunity for outdoor classroom opportunities, and that is a pledge that the board has said they really are more interested in pursuing. Surrounding commercial businesses will provide student service and learning opportunities, and perhaps school business partnerships. No such business exists near the Imperial Parkway Site. An analysis of the revenue impact reveals that the city of Benita Springs and Lee County will lose approximately $2 million annually of property taxes from residential households if the school is built on Imperial Parkway. Conversely, there will be an increase in sales for the businesses on Benita Beach Road, resulting in sales tax revenue increase for our cash-strapped government. Close proximity to the I-75 offers opportunities for the school to host conferences, competitions, and other interstate activities with easy-driving access. The school board and the media have inaccurately portrayed the Benita Grande Site as more expensive than the Imperial Parkway Site. When development, land acquisition, and construction costs are all factored in, each site will have virtually the same overall cost. There is no negative residential impact surrounding the Benita Grande Site, as evidenced by the total lack of opposition. In conclusion, to build a high school on a former dump site, which is really a brown site-
Thank you, Ms. Troop. Your time's up, ma'am.
...asbestos. Thank you.
Jane Troop.
Let's review the sequence of events on this project. One of Dr. Atkins' first project after his name superintendent was to secure a location for the new high school on Benita Springs. On January fourteenth of this year, Dr. Atkins was quoted in the Naples Daily News stating his preference for the site at Benita Beach Road and Benita Grande. He said he hoped the site selection would be finalized by early February. The Construction Advisory Committee said the school could be built on the Benita Grande Site, could be opened on time and built within budget, which at the time was $55 million. Less than two weeks later, on January twenty-seventh, Dr. Atkins made a recommendation to the school board that the new high school be built on Imperial Parkway. What happened in two weeks? What changed his mind? Here's what I think happened. After he stated his preference for the Benita Grande Site, Dr. Atkins got a phone caller, a visit, and was told by powers that be that he needed to select the Imperial Site. He was reminded that the Huthers family owned the Imperial property. The Huthers have been strong financial supporters of the schools and big donors to certain school board members. The Huthers have been unable to sell the property on Imperial Parkway. They got a raw deal when asbestos was dumped on the property and were promised that they would be taken care of if they couldn't sell the property. And now the school board is poised to pay $11 million for that property on Imperial. I know you have appraisals that say the property is worth $12 million, but the reality is, that property has been on the market for years, and nobody has touched it. The big developers, Polte, D.R., Horton, and Toll Brothers, have bought and developed all of the surrounding property, but stayed away from this tainted site. Additionally, you now plan to spend a total of $71 million on this project, this from a school system that is so financially strapped and has such poor credit that it must use a participation bond to fund this project. Please come to your senses. Wrong site, wrong price, just wrong.
Speakers sixteen through twenty are Charles Yanni, Ralph Brooks, John McMahon, Melissa Givinelli, and Martha Simmons. Joan Yanni.
She waved. She's not gonna speak.
Very well. You're next, sir.
Yes. Thank you. I know this is a futile effort. We know you've made up your mind-
Say your name, please.
Charles Yanni. This is a futile effort. You've made your decision on the Benita Grande Site as not being suitable. You did that in late January. We've known all along that it was not really being considered as a viable alternative to Imperial Parkway. Every presentation I attended, every public hearing, there was no opposition to the Benita Grande Site from Worthington or Hunters Ridge. When you had hearings, we had several hundred people speak in opposition to locating a school on that site. No one has appeared until tonight, one lady, in opposition to the Benita Grande Site. You know, your key word in February, if I recall, we were here for a meeting, was honesty. Your key word for April is integrity. You know, the reason that Bernie Sanders and Ted Cruz and Donald Trump are doing so well across the country is people are disillusioned with their political leaders, their public officials, whether they're appointed or whether they're elected. They distrust government. Honesty, integrity are two words that are easily said, but seldom practiced. I don't see it in this instance. Mr. Snell likes to talk about, he loves to deal in facts. Well, here's a fact, Mr. Snell. No time did you or any of the staff consider the Benita Grande Site. In the same length and the same breadth, you did the Imperial Site. This was a done deal in January of this year. We've all known it. We're only presenting ourselves tonight, making the arguments for a legal record. But we know you've made up your mind. We know the vote's going. Otherwise, Mr. Simmons wouldn't be here, Mr. Schwing wouldn't be here, Mr. Nelson wouldn't be here. They've never appeared before. Now they're all here supporting you, to make the other side record. But in any case, I think honesty and integrity is something you should all think about. Thank you.
Mr. Brooks.
Good evening. My name is Ralph Brooks, and I'm a board-certified city, county, and local government lawyer. I have reviewed the contract for purchase and sale on the Imperial Site, and I have a few comments. Policy 9.01 of the school board of Lee County, six C, two, says that a Phase Two environmental site assessment would be required if required under current ASTM standards. The Phase One and Phase Two ASTM standards, Phase One is E1527-13, and if there is a significant potential of contamination of soil or groundwater, or if there is a past release, or if there's a known past release has occurred, then a Phase Two environmental audit should be performed under the ASTM E1903. You don't have a Phase Two environmental audit. What you have is a Phase One audit that wasn't prepared by the school board, but in fact was prepared by the landowners, the sellers, in November eleventh, 2015. You also have information that there was asbestos remediation and environmental reports regarding Posen constructions, removal and remediation of asbestos on the property. Therefore, under your own policy, you should be requiring a Phase Two environmental audit first before you go forward with this contract. This contract is as-is and where-is condition. That's atypical for a local government to take without a Phase Two study where you know there was past contamination. I haven't been able to review the appraisals because they're not subject to public records until after tonight, or thirty days from tonight should decide not to go forward. Phase Two environmental audits can cost anywhere from $25,000 to $250,000. The environmental remediation that occurred was only on two acres of the seventy-six acres. The sampling that was done was very limited.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Your time's up, sir.
And I'd like to turn the rest in for the record. Thank you.
John McMahon.
Board members, Dr. Atkins, thank you for having me. My name's John McMahon. I am ALC math department head, as well as the Talc representative for my school. What I wanted to talk about was the change from ALC to Success Center. Now, I'm a math guy. It doesn't matter if I call a variable x or I call a variable y. What matters is what that variable represents. And it doesn't matter if you call a school ALC or Success Center. What matters is what support you offer that school. Now, since the week since you've made this announcement, about the only thing that's for certain is I may not have a job next year, and I'm fine with that. I see that as a growing pain, but I need to see that there is some direction that you guys are headed towards. So far, I've heard very little details about who's making the choices as to what is going to change. It's a disservice to all of us teachers who work with those most challenging students to not tell us what's going to happen, when we are the ones who deserve more than anyone to be part of this change. If there is no one who is actively working on this, what I would ask is that you involve some of us teachers in this decision-making process, because I cannot see anyone who would know more about how we could be best serviced and how we could be best supported. Now, when you support this center, this school, you support the entire district. These kids need help, and there's no one who is willing to support them and speak out in their favor, except a very select few. I'm not here for me. I'm not here for my colleagues. I am here for them. If you let this go and it slides back into just what it is today, the people who will suffer are going to be the students. Thank you.
Melissa Givinelli.
Good evening, Board. I am a realtor, local realtor, and I've been listening about the asbestos on Imperial Parkway, and I've seen the evidence from 2010, every bit of it, and there's no way that there's not asbestos in that ground. If there is, then I want everybody to take a jar home and put it in their bathroom and let the water soak on that and see how clean it'll come out, because I don't think it was gonna be clean. And every one of you that votes for that tonight, can you go to bed and sleep knowing that if one child, just one, becomes sick with asbestos five, ten years after that school is built and they've lived on it and went to school on it and becomes sick, and it can come back to this board and this school board? Is the liability worth it? Is it really worth it? Then, to clean it up and really clean it up, I don't even know if it really can be. If it could be, why wasn't it done right the first time? It wasn't. I've read it. I'd be glad to give anyone a copy. It was never cleaned properly. Just one child has to get sick, and it makes it all not worth it, and you wasted all our tax dollars on it. Not one person's tax dollars, all of our tax dollars. That is very deep, because now you're in my pocketbook, and we have a responsibility to every one of our children to give them a safe environment. And now, with asbestos on there, that's just one little ounce of nothing, no safety there. There's nothing safe there. Is it worth it? That's all I ask. Can you sleep on that and make it worth it? We need a high school. I implore you to find the right place for it. Thank you.
Martha Simmons.
For the record, Martha Simons. Peter Simmons is the mayor. I served with Peter and with our good former mayor, Ben Nelson, and it's nice to see them both agreeing on this. And I agree with both mayors that the Imperial Site is the site for our new high school. I'm so excited. I particularly want to thank our school board representative, the Irish last, Kathleen O'Daniel Morgan, for chairing last year and bringing this forward and representing us in Benita Springs. Also, while serving on the city council, we were in charge of Posen. It was a small amount of asbestos. Two acres were tested because it was probably not on even like a quarter of an acre. So I don't think you need to worry there. We have a very tough, at that time, and still do, very tough city manager who was on them like white on rice and made sure that that site was cleaned up. We were very disappointed when that happened and made sure that that was mitigated and mediated. So we are gonna have a high school in Benita Springs. It's gonna be a great community focus. I hope it gets one of those awards that you just gave to Benita Springs Middle School for the Arts in its first year, blasting right out. I want to encourage the folks from Hawthorne to get involved in community service at that school, because I think they're gonna find that our students in Benita Springs are some of the greatest students in the county. We're very proud of them down there. We've got some great kids. I don't think you have to worry about them. I do want you to- to look at, you know, mitigating the light concerns, the noise concerns. I was kind of the author down in Benita Springs, the dark skies ordinances, and think that's very important. But we're very excited. It's been like 35 years that folks in Benita Springs have been trying to get a high school.
Ms. Simons, your time's up.
Thank you very much. And soccer, not football, okay? Because our kids love soccer, and they're known around the country for it. Thank you.
Those are all the cards, Mr. Toiber?
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Joe Valerio? Is Joe still here? Yep.
Thank you, and good evening. Joe Valerio, for the record. I'm a resident of Benita Springs for 25 years. I live off of Shangala. I live in Hawthorne community. All I'm concerned about is the safety of the children. Shangala, I hope there's some workshops that come up, because Shangala with heavy duty and big trucks is a problem. As you can see, someone was killed in Fort Myers by big trucks that don't stop. That's 20 miles an hour on that street. I think it's a 20 mile an hour speed zone, but I can tell you right now, nobody and no cars or trucks or vehicles go down that street at a reasonable speed. I know it. My backyard is right on that street. So I applaud the board. I think it's an excellent site. I think it's going to work for Benita Springs. And may I make a comment about the asbestos? Whether the school is there or not, if I'm living in that community and it's there, I question why it wasn't done before the school was being built. You know, if there's asbestos there, guys, let's take care of it. Let's not, let's not put it on the school board. Thank you very much for your time.
Fred Baris. Fred Barisow? You leave? Kevin Regal?
Good evening. I'm glad to see supporters of both sides here, but unfortunately, this whole process has been flawed and tainted from the start. Why do you ask? Genie and Steve, you have accepted tens of thousands of dollars in campaign contributions from the Huthor family, who own the Imperial sit land.
Mr. Regal, please hold your comments.
And whose family owns Gulf Point.
Mr. Regal, please hold your comments.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. I need to provide you a caution. I need to remind you that the School Board policy requires that you confine your remarks to issues that are relevant to the operation of the school district, that you not have personal attacks as part of your comments. You have 1 minute and 46 seconds remaining. Please proceed.
Thank you, sir. But those were facts. Are you disputing that?
Mr. Regal, you've been instructed. Please continue.
Mr. Martin came to us and apologized at the end of the last board meeting. He said, what you said, Mr. Regal, I was wrong, you were right. Mayor, you were there. So I find this all pre-planned. I just want you to know. So now, let's talk about Ms. Dozier. You were on the construction committee. And Mr. Toiber, you were on the deck committee. Those committees, did they not steer this vote today? Did they not steer whose purchase of land is going to be? Of course. And we will no doubt be reminded by Mr. Martin that you are obligated to vote on this. But boy, oh, boy, I have to tell you, many in the community think that this stinks. They really do. Compounding facts, two board meetings ago, as Mrs. Dozier and as you say, we don't want attacks, but Mrs. Dozier, you did talk about people wanting to take me to the woodshed. And those were your words. You brought them up so I can talk about it. You talked about me being brought to the woodshed when I talked about quit claiming your properties, which-
Mr. Regal, we will not talk about personal issues of our school boards. One more time, you're done. Please continue.
Mr. Toiber, do you not do those for her?
Mr. Regal, to the School Board operations.
Yes, sir, no, sir?
You have 26 seconds, Mr. Regal. Please continue.
Okay, thank you. This whole process, as you can see, has been to shut me down and what they've been doing. Boy, oh, boy, everybody here can see it. You know what? Nice job. Thank you.
Mr. Orthodoxo.
My name is Mary Orthodoxo, Board Superintendent. I listen to both sides here. I have the evidence. I have the evidence of fudging the bids to give it to your special friends. Two of you sitting on this board take heavy, heavy donations.
Ms. Orthodoxo, please.
I didn't mention anybody's names, Mr. Martin.
Ms. Orthodoxo, I ask you to please hold your comments. I need to provide you a caution at this time. I need to ask you, in conformance with School Board policy, to confine your remarks to matters relevant to the operation of the school district.
Can I have that policy number?
Without any personal attacks. You have 1 minute and 40 seconds remaining.
What is the policy number, sir?
We're not going to have a debate at this time. Your time is running, ma'am. You may proceed.
You know what? You guys are a joke. Hawthorne, I got the, I got the evidence for you.
Thank you. This closes public comment. A few additions. I want to thank all the people that came out to address the vote we have today. It has been a long process. I appreciate the comments on both sides. Appreciate everything that they've been said. The remediation issues, we actually have four experts here today. We have our attorneys. We also have Johnson Engineering at Aramark at this time to be able to address anything. Mr. Martin, at this time, do you feel it's necessary to address any of the issues that were remediated?
Not unless the board has questions at this point.
Board members, do you have any questions on the remediation after the disclosures that we've had? Ms. Morgan?
Well, I'll just pose one. I understood that there will be more due diligence done on the property once this contract is signed before it is closed. Is that correct?
That's correct. And probably what I should do is ask Reggie to come up, Mr. Snell, and he will be a little bit more specific about next steps in terms of our process.
Well, he wasn't here.
He wasn't here.
Was that Fred? I called, I called your name. Do you step out?
Yeah, Mr. Brown, last name.
Would you like, would you come down and speak? And Reggie, we'll have you address the issue and remediation. No, please come down and speak.
Oh, okay. For the School Board and everybody else, I was a realtor in Massachusetts for 30 years. In the last 20 years, I sold just land, and I smoked out 50, 350 acres, 400 acres. All I can say is if you hired me to go look for school land, to place the school, I would have just bypassed that Imperial site as a residential area. It is just, is not the right site for a school. That's all I can say.
Okay.
Could you please state your name, sir, for the record?
Sorry, it's Fred Bynicle.
Thank you.
B-Y-N-I-C-L-E.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Snell, would you please address the issues as far as what we're, at this point, what has to still be done for remediation or further diligence?
Well, what, obviously, what will happen next will be the approval of the contract. Then we will move forward with all of our due diligence that we have to do to prepare the site to build the school. We have a series of requirements that we have to do. As far as the debate about the asbestos is, and we've had this conversation before, the asbestos was cleaned up back in 2010. It was removed per all state and federal regulations. The company that performed the act, AMRC, has done asbestos work for the district also. Excuse me. They've issued a complete report. I've read the report multiple times. I've looked at the data. The thing that, about AMRC and the companies that we work with, they've been the most honest and professional company with this type of investigations and certifications. Right now, this is all about the science. And the science says that it was abated according to laws and statutes. It was tested, sent off to a lab. The site was cleared, and by the science, it's gone. So that's what we've been looking at, and this is an event that happened. The piping material that was put on the site was put there in '08, '07, somewhere in there, when they were building Imperial Parkway. And it was cleaned up in '09, and the final report was issued in '10. And I think asbestos is one of those things that, that people are, you know, they don't really know what it is. But as far as what we have to go by, which is the data, the data that we have of what happened on that site clearly states that it's, it's clean where the piping was placed.
Thank you, Mr. Snell.
Anything else?
No, sir. We're good. Ms. LaRiviera?
I know that there was one section, a 2-acre section that was tested, correct?
Well, the, the area that was, that the piping and the rocks were dumped on was less than 2 acres.
Okay.
That's where the material was, and that was the area that was abated and tested and cleared.
Because it does not transfer like some other elements.
In this particular case, no, because when they were doing the abatement, if you read the report, they used all of the air monitoring systems. They used all the water, wetting of the site as they were cleaning to make sure that nothing got airborne. And they were also doing all of that testing right there on the site, and, and nothing got out.
Okay.
Mr. Martin.
Ms. LaRiviera? Mr. Martin.
Yes, Mr. Toiber. We do have an expert here this evening, Roxanne Goss, who I think could address some of the issues that have been raised specifically with respect to the Phase 1 and why a Phase 2 was not accomplished.
Ms. Goss?
Ms. Goss, as you begin, if you could explain your expertise in this area.
Yes, my name is Roxanne Goss. I'm a professional environmental engineer who has been doing Phase 1s and Phase 2s since 1993. And I've been practicing here in Lee County since the year 2000. So yes, we did, GHD conducted the Phase 1 originally, and we also just recently did an update. And the reason we didn't have a Phase 2, because there were no recognized environmental condition that wasn't, there was one as far as if you want to say that the staging area with the asbestos, we had that information. We had that in the appendices. We read the report. We talked, we had interviews. And the fact that the DEP had good clearance, we read the report from this, from AMRC. And so, once that we've read those, that report and the fact that the DEP cleared the site, then there was no reason to conduct a Phase 2.
Ms. Fisher?
So, so then what you're saying is that no further testing was done?
No further testing was required, exactly. And that's to ASTM standards. It's up to our decision-making that if there was no reason to do, there were no recognized environmental conditions, then we did not conduct a Phase 2. And that's standard procedure. We don't do Phase 1s and Phase 2s on all sites. It's only the Phase 1, and then we determine if there's any conditions. And there wasn't for that site.
Ms. Dozier?
So, in your expert opinion, you just said that because there were no certain conditions that were present, it wasn't necessary to do the Phase 2, and therefore, you've done a, you've updated the Stage 1?
Well, we, we cleared the, we cleared the, the first report stated that there were no recognized environmental conditions. We were requested to do an update because this report, according to ASTM standards, the reports are basically only good for six months. And we are approaching that date fairly soon. And if there was going to be a future closing and stuff, it would, it would have gone out of date. So we were requested to go ahead and perform an update, because the six months' time of the original Phase 1 was almost over with.
So, in your expert opinion, it is a safe site?
It is a safe site.
Thank you.
And I also would justify it, too. I'm also a licensed asbestos consultant. I have been for the past 16 years. So I am knowledgeable about this material also. So yes, I'd say it was safe.
Ms. Dozier?
Did the school district pay you to come here and say that this evening?
No, they did not.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Reggie. At this point, we'll now move to our consent agenda. I'm going to first go for the, any polls that we may have. Ms. Fisher, do you have any polls this evening?
I have no polls this evening.
Ms. Dozier, do you have any polls?
No polls, thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
Ms. LaRiviera?
None.
Thank you, and I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent items?
So moved. Second?
Moved by Ms. Dozier, seconded by Ms. Fisher. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Including the approval of consent items under the agenda are the resolutions proclaiming April 22, 2016, as Earth Day, and the week of April 24 through the 30th as Administrative Professionals Week. Dr. Atkins, would you please introduce any administrators in attendance with their new assignments?
Yes, sir. The, I would, it's my pleasure to introduce Marty Ayewang. Marty is taking over the Success Academy that we heard earlier. We are excited that, about this new adventure for her, this new journey. I will talk a little bit more about the Success Academy in my comments, but please join me and congratulate her on her new assignment.
That's all?
That's it, yes, sir.
Okay, we'll now move to superintendent's recommendations. We'll go first to our, oh, I was thinking the four. We haven't voted on them yet. We'll go to the Good Cause item, the approval of the administrative transfers.
Okay, before I get into this item, I have to say, I certainly appreciate some of the com, the public comments this evening and also the letters that we've received. This is one of the most difficult decisions that, that I have had to make in this position, and that is to take and ask really beloved, talented individuals to move from their schools to another assignment. And we're doing this to do really what's in the best interest of students. So, you know, I'm very humbled by the attitude of these individuals. So let me introduce them to you. Well, let me do the recommendation first. I recommend board approval for the following administrative transfers. Linda Mayer from Benita Springs Middle Center for the Arts to Harms Marsh Middle, effective July 1, 2016. Robert Mizzoli from Pine Island Elementary to Edgewood Academy, effective July 1, 2016. Ronald Lamar from Royal Palm Exceptional Center to Manatee Elementary, effective July 1, 2016. And Sheri Wiff from Tanglewood Elementary to Lehigh Elementary, effective July 1, 2016.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, you've heard the motion. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
Moved by Ms. Fisher, seconded by Ms. Dozier. Any discussion? Ms. LaRiviera?
I just want to commend the attitude of Mr., Andrew, I can't remember your last name. The attitude-
Andrew Evans.
Evans, that's it. And you may not be here still. You may have gone ahead and left for the evening. The heartfelt desire to support Ms. Wiff coming to Lehigh Elementary and the willingness of parents to give up someone who's beloved was very, it was wonderful to hear. And I totally get when people are so sad to see people go. And, and you, and we think life will, it won't be as good, but usually it winds up being better. And I just want to say that I am, I'm in support of these decisions, and I believe that, Dr. Atkins, you did, your decisions were thoughtful about what we needed to help all of our schools be successful and our students succeed.
Ms. Dozier?
Well, I will be supporting these this evening. And I have not had the opportunity to personally talk to any of the people that are, that are willing to take a new assignment on, but I did have a conversation with the superintendent. And the superintendent basically said that everyone that he has spoken to- said that everyone that he has spoken to, your willingness to be a team player, your willingness to be supportive of the district, and do whatever is in the best interest of the district overwhelmingly came through. So, thank you for your willingness to step up and do what we need to do. We know we have some areas of challenges, and so, we just appreciate your willingness to do what needs to be done and be a team player, and I look forward to reaching out and seeing each one of you at your new locations. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan.
I've received a number of communications from Bonita Middle parents and teachers about Mrs. Linda Mayer leaving Bonita Middle. And in responding to them, I have said that I recognize that she's a visionary, that she's a change agent, that she has transformed the perception of Bonita Middle in that part of the Lee County, and it is very hard for them to let her go. On the other hand, I said, I don't think she is there with the notion that she will always be there and they can't make it without her. The fact of the matter is, she has created a team through hire, through good hires and good management practices. She's created a foundation and a team that I think will be able to carry on without her. That is her legacy, that foundation. And also, I will say that I do not believe for a moment that Dr. Atkins would not move in somebody that he did not have full confidence in, given the great distance that this school has traveled and the momentum that is currently there. So, I will be supporting these recommendations also, and like the others have said, I do very much appreciate the willingness of people to give up schools where they have been successful and have formed very close relationships with the parent community, the faculty, et cetera. But I am, I'm excited for the schools to which these students are going, and I really do not have, as the representative from Bonita, I'm sorry to see Mrs. Mayer go, but I have every confidence that Bonita is on a great track, she's positioned it, and her successor will do a terrific job as well. Those are my comments.
Thank you, and I also, I have echoed my fellow board members, it's been a long time since I can remember that I've been so inundated by emails for these four particular administrators as they're moving, parents saying, "They're not done yet, they're not done yet." And I appreciate the parents that communicated and, you know, and I told them, the same as Ms. Morgan, that, you know, they, they are moving forward to help us move even farther forward, and they're needed in spots, in key spots, and they have left, they're not deserting you, they've left an imprint, and, and we're gonna continue to replace them with, with others that will, that will carry on their legacies. And they're very good strategic moves to move our district to greater heights, and Dr. Atkins, his decisions are, these type of things are never easy, but I do appreciate him stepping up and doing the things that need to be done to move us to a higher level. So, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Atkins.
Okay, if you don't mind at this time, what I'd like to do is introduce those individuals. First of all, Linda Mayer, who's now, July 1st, moving to Harms Marsh Middle. Robert Mazzoli, moving from Pine Island to Edgewood Academy. Ashley Lamar, Royal Palm Center to Manatee Elementary. Wiff, Tanglewood, to Lehigh Elementary. And I do want to appreciate board for your support in really that courageous action, and also my team, the folks in school development and cabinet who also deliberated quite a bit to come up with these decisions. These are some really dynamic leaders, they're going to continue to make fantastic changes in the district, so I really appreciate that support.
Thank you, next recommendation?
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval of the proposed supervisory technical and confidential employee salary schedule at the approximate expenditure for FY16 of $790,000, and an approximate expenditure for FY17 of $211,500 for the new pay structure for substitutes.
Board members, you've heard the motion, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Morgan, seconded by Ms. Dozier, any discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Atkins.
And next recommendation, I recommend board approval of the LLL South Zone High School total project cost of $70,935,000. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all necessary documents.
Board members, you've heard the recommendation for the school LLL, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Morgan, seconded by Ms. Dozier, any discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Dr. Atkins.
I recommend board ratification of the agreement to purchase land in the amount of $11 million from Tech's Development Corporation for 76 acres on Imperial Parkway, Bonita Springs, and approve attorney and appraisal fees, due diligence and closing costs of up to $148,700 for a total cost of $11,148,700. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all necessary documents.
Board member, you've heard the recommendations, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Morgan, seconded by Ms. Fisher, any discussion? Ms. Morgan.
This has been a long process, and so I just want to take this opportunity to thank former mayor, Ben Nelson, city manager, Carl Swing, and the former city council and staff for a lot of work. I think it's impressive that the staffs from the district and the staffs from the city were able to work so well together and sort of on the fly as opportunities changed and situations changed, the commitment was unwavering, the teamwork was excellent, and that's one reason we got where we did. And I want to compliment the new mayor, Peter Simmons, and the new city council, because I know as we go through this process of getting this school developed and built, that there will be questions and concerns raised, and I have every expectation that the mayor, the city council, and staff will work as effectively with the superintendent and our staff as was done with the previous council and mayor. I'm excited for Bonita. Bonita now has a complete school system, the South Zone has a complete school system. It will take the edge off of the growth that we're experiencing in the South Zone, and, you know, there's a lot of effort in the South Zone to grow and diversify that economy, and I am really excited by what this school promises to bring to both the students in terms of opportunity and to the business community in terms of potential working relationships with the faculty at those schools. So, can't wait to hear what the, is it gonna be like a Panther Den or something? What is it gonna be, the mascot? I don't know.
It's decided.
It's not decided, I just said I can't wait to hear. Anyway, those are my comments.
Ms. Dozier.
Yes.
I said Panther Den.
Ms. Morgan, I want to thank you for, you've been on this project for quite some time. In fact, you have, at times, made some comments that were very difficult, I know, to make. You also have, have stood up and also told us things that we needed to do as a board, and, you know, one of the things she said, you know, "We shouldn't be making a decision unless we have actually gone down, looked at all the properties, and so forth." So, I appreciate you making that suggestion to all of us. And again, I appreciate the fact that you have taken the lead on this project, and every, everyone here I know has done their due diligence, and I appreciate the fact that you have taken the lead, and you've kind of dogged this, and because this is your area and this is your community, and I told you that, you know, your decision, I valued it and I appreciated it because it's closest to you. So therefore, I will be supporting this this evening. I, you know, I appreciate the fact that all of you have come to the board to speak, and the decision is gonna be made tonight, and I hope that after the decision is made, I hope we can all join together and we can make this the premier high school, one of the best high schools in the district. I know that it can be, and I know that all of you that are here in the red shirts, you love kids in your heart, and I know that all of you are going to enjoy that school in your, in your community. So, let's all work together and let's have a great school down there, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dozier. Mayor Nelson, and I remember Mayor Nelson, in 2010 when we tried, we tried just to put one down there then, and we just, the numbers just didn't warrant it, but I, but I told you, I promised you when we, when the numbers were there, we were gonna get a school there, and I never wavered. All of Bonita has never wavered from their desire to have a school. They stood patiently and waited until we were right, until the timing was right, and I thank you, and I thank Mayor Simmons and Mr. Swing and the entire process, these, you know, as we started going forward with this timeline, working with our district and making it forward and the positive support that you gave us. So, I will also be supporting this and am very proud to add a Southern school into our district, and look forward to seeing the great things that are gonna happen. So, at this point, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Dr. Atkins.
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval to award RFP for paving projects throughout the district to Bateman Contracting LLP and Pavement Maintenance LLC as indicated on the attached proposal tabulation for the period beginning April 19, 2016 through April 18, 2019 with renewal options for two additional one-year periods upon written agreement of the vendors and the district and estimated annual expenditure for the first year of $1,250,000. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents.
Have you heard the motion, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Fisher, seconded by Ms. LaRiviera, any discussion? I'll call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Your last recommendation, Dr. Atkins.
Recommend board approval to award bid for the installation of air conditioning and mini split and split systems.
Hold on a minute, Dr. Atkins.
Sure, thank you. I recommend board approval to award bid number B157246JC for the installation only of air conditioning, mini split, and split systems on an as-needed basis for the Maintenance Services Department to Country Cooling and Heating, Inc., D&amp;D Air Conditioning and Heating, Inc., Nemeth Air Conditioning, Inc., Windco, Inc., and Southwest Heating and Cooling, Inc. as indicated on the attached tabulation sheet for the period of April 22, 2016 through April 21, 2017 with renewal options for two additional one-year periods upon written agreement of the vendors and the district at an estimated annual expenditure of $600,000 for the first year. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents.
Board members, you've heard the motion, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Fisher, seconded by Ms. Dozier, any discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. That concludes our superintendent's recommendations, we now have a public hearing. So, Dr. Atkins, would you please read the recommendation, it's not actually a recommendation, the notice, would you call it, Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Notice?
Appropriately written.
Would you please read the notice before we close and open the public hearing? Dr. Atkins.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just, okay. I recommend the board conduct a public hearing to receive comment on the instructional materials proposed for the adoption in the 2016-2017 instructional materials plan.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. This is new, our second year for this by state statute. This time, the public will be invited, we're now gonna close the current board meeting and open up public hearing. This time, the public will be invited to speak for one minute, the, on this one, will be able to speak on this one item, which is the instructional materials, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Is there anybody that would like to address the instructional materials that we're opening up to comment on? Anybody on the right? Mr. Fox, anybody on the left? Mr. Fox, please come forward, you have three minutes.
Limited to the 2017 material instruction plan. Yeah, yeah, thank you. If I'm wrong, just, just tell me and I'll stop, but I wanted to, as part of instruction, last week, our last meeting, it was brought up the use of computers for the children in elementary school, and that's the area that I want to address. Steve, is that, is that fine?
It's fine.
Okay. I very much think that the district is heading down the wrong, wrong path by issuing computers to elementary school kids. It's a time when they absorb quickly, and they need to learn to use their own God-given talents, pencil, paper, and a teacher in the elementary school. It's already, when they get to middle school, they're already getting the Chromebook, and my daughter got one, she's in sixth grade, and she's capable of handling it, she's, she's an excellent student, but I worry that it's too much of a, for weaker students that, you know, it takes their attention away from the actual work. I, I just, no question, elementary school, I see kids who borrow their kids, their parents or their brothers and sisters' cellphone, and they're just captivated by it. They don't play, they don't do anything, they just play video games, and I don't think in elementary school that we should be encouraging kids to play video games or not go outside and play during recess. Really, I, I think that they're spending, that you're planning on spending millions of dollars that, that's only going to hurt the students and not help them. Kids, until they get to middle school, when they're developing in elementary school, they need to be writing paragraphs, working math problems, and doing the things that normal kids do. I, I hope the board really considers that. I know all of you are parents, all of you experienced, and I just think it's a very serious error to issue Chromebooks to elementary school kids. I, I'd just be shocked if your first grader had a Chromebook. It was, I hope you very, very much think that, I know that the staff has been proposing that, I saw it at the briefing, and please, just take this district in a different direction, spend the money in other places that it's more useful, and let the kids be kids. This whole Common Core and testing, you're trying to ask the kids to grow up and be responsible before they're grown up and responsible. That's the big problem, and it causes difficulties all the way through. How can a teacher teach on a computer? They need to be doing pencil and paper, writing paragraphs, cursi, thank you, and, and, you know, doing the things that, that traditional elementary school kids do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. At this point, I'll now close the public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting, April 19, 2016. We're now move to other business, which will be board member comments. I'll start with you, Ms. LaRiviera.
Um, I have no comments at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan.
I would like to thank John McMahon for coming forward. We've, we've heard a lot from the superintendent, and we heard a little bit this morning in our workshop about the proposal for the success school. I hope Dr. Atkins will be addressing Mr. McMahon's questions in his, in his comments. With respect to the high school, there is, and, and comments that Mr. Fox has made. You know, when, when we started down this path well over a year ago, it was my expectation that the board was gonna go forward with a bond, or not a bond, excuse me, with a referendum on the sales tax, and I felt sort of like there was a bait and switch there, but as it turns out, we approved the high school without a, or continuing the, the high school project without a funding solution, and then events have intervened, and now I have switched my position on moving forward with a referendum in this particular election cycle. But I want to assure Mr. Fox and other people who are concerned, that I absolutely believe that we have a desperate problem with respect to capital revenue. It's a problem we're gonna have to tackle. I just don't believe that the public is ready for us to come forward with a referendum at this point in time. So, essentially, what I'm saying to Bonita is, you've got your high school, but you've got it on the back of the entire district, because the, the capital money that is being used for technology, busing, everything else, maintenance of buildings, renovation of buildings, that's, that money is, is going to be depleted in order to start paying for this new high school. So, the, the high school is on the back of the entire community, and I hope Bonita will lead the charge, as will Lehigh, because they're, they're the ones who need the next high school when it comes to advocating for this, for some sort of additional capital funding source. So, that's my, my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Dozier.
Thank you. I want to thank all of the staff that has been working very hard on this project for this school site. I know that there've been a lot of staff members that have put in a lot of long hours about this and had a lot of meetings, and I appreciate the fact that, that you've done this and we've been able to finally make a decision and move forward with what we've done.[1799.56] decision and move forward with what we've done. I want to thank Mr. Mann also for coming forward. And the fact that you've been a teacher at ALC and the fact that you were not called on, I think that is something that we should have done. You know, sometimes hindsight's better than what we're looking at. So, I hope that the superintendent and his staff will call on some of you. In fact, that was one of the issues that I was going to talk to him about when I have my next meeting tomorrow with him, some of the issues that I have heard as a result of how this has moved forward and the fact that all of you were kind of in the dark about it. And, you know, that's not one of the things that, as a board, I know that's something that I have talked about repeatedly, and that is communication with the public, making sure that, you know, all the players are aware of what's going on and know what we're doing and will not have surprises. Because I don't like surprises, and I don't think anybody else likes surprises either. So, thank you for coming, thank you for coming forth today and sharing, you know, your thoughts and your opinions with us. Mr. Fox, as far as the tax is concerned, you know, the superintendent basically said that, you know, we've had a transition in this district for the last six years. We've had transition of different superintendents. And anytime you have that, that in itself poses a, I don't want to say a lack of confidence, but it poses a situation where people are a little reluctant, if you will, to do anything. And the superintendent has asked that we take time to educate the public, that we take time to look at everything we're doing. In other words, I think some of us talked about peeling back the onion, peeling back every bit of the budget, looking if there's any areas that can be reduced. And I know that the superintendent is already working to do that. And I will tell you that over the last six years, it has, I think if it had gone to the public, it never would have voted. I think if we were to put it on the ballot right now, I do not believe it will vote. I mean, the public would vote for it. I know you say that there's a lot of people out there that are for it. Every time, every time I hear people saying that they're for it, I get phone calls that say, "If you try to do that, we're going to vote against it." And it costs money to actually put it out there, put it on the ballot. And until I know that we can actually pass a referendum, I am not going to get behind it. So, that's where I am right now. So, that's all I have tonight. Thank you very much. And thank all of you that were here tonight to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Dozier. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. I'd like to start by welcoming Ben Burkey, our student representative, and thanking him for taking time out of his busy schedule to sit with us this evening. And I'm anxious to hear his comments. I also want to thank the Ida Baker High School Musical Theater, part of their drama department for not only their wonderful performance tonight, but for all of the work that they do in the community and bring joy to people. Education is the economic driver for the community. So, I'm very excited because ever since I was elected to the board in 2010, there has been a conversation about high school in Benita. So, I'm very proud that we will indeed be having a state-of-the-art facility there. And I think that we have had a partnership among local governments and the chamber. And everyone has done a lot of work. And I want to thank the staff for answering all of our questions, taking us on field trips, and trying to keep us informed as we reviewed all of the sites that were up for grabs. And I think that we have chosen the right site. And I know that most of our high schools are in neighborhoods, and the neighbors do embrace the high schools, and they enjoy the football games and the performances. And really, it enhances the community. So, I'm very happy for Benita that they are finally having their own high school. Regarding the ALC and the changes and the supports, I also talk a lot about communication. And I heartily believe that when there's a change in any organization, whether it be at the school level or a bigger level, that everybody should be informed so that they know what to expect. And it's my understanding that everyone has to reapply for their jobs because perhaps there are some people who might not wish to stay with the new approach. I think it's going to be good. I think it's critical that teachers are involved in the change and involved in the planning for programs and supports. And I'm going to encourage that to continue. Regarding the sales tax, I'm committed to keeping the conversation going. We've had the conversation the whole time I've been on the board. And I'm sorry that we are even still having the conversation because I believe the community is ready. And one of the things that really was an eye-opener to me was that in 2007, our capital budget was $670 million. And in 2015, it was $190 million, not due to mismanagement or foolish spending, but to the cuts in the money that we received from the state, from property taxes, from impact fees. So, we are still operating with not even a third of what we had a dozen years ago or nine years ago. So, I think that education is important. Dr. Atkins has asked us for time to survey the community and to get the word out there. But at some point, we will bring it forward. And in the meantime, I'm committed to keeping the conversation going. And that's it. I want to thank everyone and wish you all a healthy, happy, good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Mr. Burkey.
I just want to start off by thanking you all for coming out. I do want to thank my principal, Mr. Matt Vedaros, for being here and supporting me all through my high school career. And thank you that you did appoint me to serve on this board and in such a great position that I have the opportunity to serve on. I do want to thank all the 18 high school, or 18 schools that got recognized for having five-star school awards. I think that's such a great achievement, and I think every school should strive for that. I love hearing everyone's different point of views, and it's definitely put a spin on my government point of view. And thank you all for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Burkey. And I also want to thank everybody for being here at this, at this meeting as well. As far as the sales tax, I'm still not in support of it, again, for much of the reasons that Ms. Dozier alluded to, but also that I believe that we owe the community forensic transparency that we don't have and stable leadership that we are now just beginning to see. So, those two things are not undoable. I certainly comport with Ms. Morgan and Ms. LaRiviere and Ms. Fisher as far as our capital expenditures. We are spending a whole lot more, and Mr. Fox, we're spending a whole lot more capital money doing things the wrong way than to do things with preventive maintenance, to do things with not paying for financing and not doing things by not doing things when they repair to replace things that need, that went way beyond their duty cycle. We're spending more money, and at the end of the day, that money could be going in the classrooms. So, you know, we have a huge investment in our properties. They have value. If you don't take care of them, they don't. And that's more of a sin to our taxpayers is not taking care of the buildings that we have, in addition to the buildings that we need to build. The last thing I'd like to say, our grand poobah, Ms. Donna Mutsnar, the head of our union officials, I can't think of the Talc and Spalc, I don't know their full names, teachers association and professionals, but our head person for our unions, it's her birthday today. So, I wanted to wish her a happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
And at this point, we are very blessed to have a good cooperative relationship with our unions, that they try to do what they need to do for their people and supportive, but they also understand that we have a duty as well to our taxpayers. And we work collaboratively together to get the best that we can for all concerned. So, I appreciate the relationship that we've had ever since I've been on the board. Now go to Mr. Martin.
Nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
Dr. Atkins.
Well, first of all, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the board for your support regarding the property purchase and also the total cost of project for LLL. That was a courageous move. And, but I absolutely know that we're doing the right thing. And I'm really, really excited about where this district is going. You know, one of the things, I don't proclaim to be an expert in those things related to the construction of a high school, but that is why we rely on experts to guide us through that process. You know, to be able to work with Reggie Snell, for example, who has, I don't know how many schools you have built, but since, you know, you started your tenure here, but that type of experience makes me very confident in the recommendations that we make. And then, of course, you know, Mark, Maura, Don Huff, and then all the folks that provided their expertise. I do appreciate you all taking the time to literally visit the site, walk the site, make an informed decision, sit down with us literally hours, reading, going over, going over proposals, going over reports. You truly did your due diligence, and I think that, you know, some of the folks in Benita Springs realized that and commented on that. And Carl, for example, from Benita, has been through this process with us many, many times. So, for them to, you know, comment on the thoroughness is greatly appreciated, but I think that's a credit to our staff and this board. So, I definitely appreciate, appreciate your support. And like I said, excited about what's going to be built there. Just quickly, I want to address, you know, Mark, Donna, we do have upcoming negotiations, and you know it's going to be a challenging process, but that's the nice thing about interest-based, is we can really dive into the issues. The thing that I really appreciate is that we deal openly with the budget, and we talk about the priorities. And I also appreciate the board in executive session takes the time to passionately discuss the issues. And real, quite honestly, this last time, I really feel that we ended up reaching a better agreement because all sides, you know, pushed pretty hard for their interests. And that made us really double down and work hard to make it work based on what we feel is in the best interest of the district, which is getting high-quality teachers. So, we are looking forward to getting started soon. But this particular negotiations with both Talc and Spalc, I think, are going to be even more complicated because the Tallahassee really did not do its part, which is unfortunately unfortunate for us with less than 1% funding. But we'll figure it out. I do want to speak about the Success Academy. And first of all, with Mr. McMahon, did I get that right? Okay, thank you. I apologize if you weren't in the communication loop. And because as I understood what happened, we had at least two visits to each site, one by, I believe, Talc and Spalc representatives, and then also we had another one by Dr. Spiro and Dr. Bohatch. Having said all that, I did receive, I did talk to, received a PowerPoint from J.D. Hebner about, you know, J.D. had a very, very thorough PowerPoint in terms of, you know, vision for the, for that school, in terms of speaking to some of the concerns there, made some good points, talked to Janice Cass at a Dunbar Community Meeting about, about some of the things that she thought were important to the success of that school. But moving forward, you know, I really rely on Marty Iovine to really take that bull by the horns and make sure that, that we make that place the best that it can be. The vision there is to truly treat the root cause of the student, you know, issue, the concern. You know, I can tell you that I have been in situations where, you know, ALC works real well and other situations where it doesn't work real well. We have to make the alternative setting work. The Success Academy is a longer stay. It's a minimum of 90, up to 180 days. We have already, in terms of actions that we have taken, Dr. Decimores has worked with staff to increase the budget there in terms of providing things for that school, wraparound services such as a full-time social worker, psychologist, behavioral specialist, mental health, and drug treatment counseling. We are going to be employing restorative practices there, so there will be training. JRTC classes will be required for those students, and they will have individual academic goals and behavioral plans so that when a student comes back to a high school or a middle school, and now even an elementary school, they are ready to be successful. And, you know, so I think, I think we're going to really see some great things moving forward, and that will involve the staff that's there. And then you also have my commitment to all staff at that school that we need your services, whether at the Success Academy or at another location in the district, because we need, we need great teachers. That's our life's blood. So, we will make a commitment to you moving forward that we will have better communication. And that's all I want to say about that one, other than I'm excited also about that prospect of what that's going to look like in the next year. And I believe, having said that, that is all that I have for comments, other than to say, again, just one last thing about the turnaround schools and the turnaround principals. That's exciting. That's a first step to making, taking this from truly a good district to a great district. And I'm looking forward to watching those journeys of those principals. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Scheduled meetings of the board on Tuesday, May 3. There's a school board workshop at 2:00 PM. It's as well as at 6:00 PM, there's a school board action meeting. At this point, having no other business to come before this body, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
By Ms. Dozier.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. LaRiviere. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. This meeting is adjourned.